It is six o'clock and I want to welcome our home team to the January eighteen twenty twenty four County Commission meeting. And so I'm assuming there's not a whole lot controversial tonight since we're all homegrown here tonight. But I've asked Commissioner Fendig to lead us in the invocation and I'll lead us in the pledge if you'll stand with us, please.
All right. Thank you, Lord Jesus. In your name we approach the throne and make our love for the unknown and our requests that always are needful for mankind. There are many things that are going on. We, of course, pray for the peace of Israel and all of that region area and for the protection and safety. And we pray for the United States, our leadership at all levels of government and our candidates that are now out pursuing their place in official offices throughout the federal government, the state, and the nation and local communities becoming next year. Please raise up good people, honest people, people with vision, people that care and love and work under your purpose. We thank you for this group here tonight in the meeting and we bless your name in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve consent agenda for general business and consent agenda for finance committee with anything Commissioner wishes to pull. Second, have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for general business and finance. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number sixteen, consider the appointment of one citizen to serve on the Coastal African American Historic Preservation Commission. The uninspired term of Tariq Bay will begin immediately and end June thirty twenty twenty four. Applicants are Floyd Phoenix and Angel Richards.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Floyd Phoenix to serve.
Second, have a nomination for Floyd Phoenix with a second, a nomination from Commissioner Booker. And I don't think we'd need a second, but even so, we have one from Commissioner Rofalski. Any other nominations? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Is Floyd Phoenix in the room tonight? I don't, I don't see him.
No.
I knew him a lifetime ago. Yeah, so it would have been nice to, yeah. All right, item number seventeen, general business. Consider adoption of the Glen County Fire Department Pay Plan proposal with an effective date no later than the first pay period of April twenty twenty four. And Chief Finney.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, Vincent Cristofalo, Fire Chief, Glen County Fire Rescue. Commissioners, thank you on behalf of the members of Glen County Fire Rescue for taking the time tonight to listen to our pay proposal that we put together. I'm going to follow the same kind of pattern that the Police Department Sheriff's Office did, tell us a little bit about what we do, who we are, why we do, go over a little bit of our vacancies that we're currently under, and then the proposal. So Glen County Fire Rescue is an all hazards emergency response agency. So we're not just EMS and fire. We are hazmat, technical rescue, water rescue, aircraft firefighting at the Brunswick Airport. Drone operators, pretty much I'd like to say, here in Glen County, there's no nine one two, there's just nine one one. You call, we're coming, along with our brothers and sisters in blue from the Sheriff's Office and the Glen County Police Department. On August first, we improved our ISO rating from a class three to a class two. That's an evaluation of the fire department's ability to fight fires within your community, the water system, how it distributes water, and also how we are dispatched through nine one one. With that improvement, the commercial property should be able to see, depending on which insurance company they're with, a savings in the property insurance. Once you get above a five, okay, with one being the highest, we're now at two, the homeowners do not really see an improvement in their homeowner's insurance. But commercial property should, should see an improvement with that class two improvement. We serve from eight fire stations with seven engine companies, two truck companies, seven full-time ambulances, one ARF unit out there at the airport, and then we have two tenders, which are large, large capacity water vehicles that go out to the rural areas or areas that don't have hydrants. This map shows our ability to respond to areas within four minutes from our fire stations. Anything that's not colored is an area where we go beyond the four-minute mark. The standard we try to meet is four minutes. We don't get to control our travel time, we call it, because we don't get to control the time of day, the traffic situations, whether, where the units are when they're dispatched. But this kind of shows what we're able to cover. So as I said, we provide the fire rescue and EMS services to unincorporated Glen County. We also provide the EMS service to the city of Brunswick. Jekyll Island has its own fire and EMS. We're composed of an operations branch and an administrative branch. The operations branch is basically the boots in the street, the units in the street, and then also the training division. Administration is the Fire Chief's office and then fire prevention, fire marshal, things such as that. So our statistics here in Glen County, five hundred and eighty-five total square miles, eighty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine population, three point four million visitors, untold numbers up and down I ninety-five all day long, plus our other feeder roads that come in. So each day we have thirty-four people that are responsible for all of this. Our two thousand twenty-three run data showed a slight increase over two thousand twenty-two with eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five total incidents, a monthly average of fif- one thousand five hundred and seventy, a daily average of fifty-one. This pie chart shows how the breakdown of the call types, with that large seventy-five percent being our EMS calls. EMS calls drive the fire service nationally and it's driving the fire service here in Glen County. This chart shows that our monthly call volume stays pretty level month over month, year over year. This map shows how the call volumes broken up through a day, based on the day of the week and then the hours. On the left side is the midnight hour going all the way through a day, where it's darker, on darker red, orange are the busy times, the daytime hours. But the point of this is to show that, that we are running calls day and night, night and day. You know, there's really no sleep for us there in the fire stations now with this call volume. Right, this chart is using two thousand twenty-two data from the state of Georgia. And what it shows is that Glen County Fire Rescue is the twelfth busiest fire department in the state of Georgia. The top eight departments are in the Atlanta metroplex area, and the other three are Columbus, Georgia, Augusta, Georgia, and Macon Bibb County. This is our local fire department comparison with our twelve, number twelve ranking, and then showing that we're busier than Savannah, we're busier than Valdosta. So along the eastern seaboard of Georgia and then all the way across to the state of Alabama along the south, we are the busiest fire department in the state of Georgia through that swath. This chart details the amount of training it takes to get a civilian from, from the civilian level, from firefighter all the way through to advanced EMT, and if they want to go to paramedic. So getting to that, that entry level certification level is one thousand two hundred and fifteen hours. If they decide they want to become a paramedic for us, it's an additional fourteen hundred hours of training or a ten-month program. This next slide shows the additional advanced certification training hours that we require our officers to get, hazardous material technicians, technical rescue technicians, things like that. So the training for us doesn't just stop when you go to the fire academy or you become an advanced EMT or EMT basic. We require ongoing training year over year and we're required to minimum, minimum training annually by the state of Georgia. The fire department is budgeted for a hundred and thirty-six total personnel in the operations branch, and that's, that's the boots on the street. We're shooting for a hundred and twenty, we're trying to get to forty per shift, okay? That includes the, from the firefighter to the battalion chief, okay, those, those out there running the calls, handling the incidents for us. And then the administrative branch, we have sixteen personnel, which includes fire prevention, the fire chief, administrative staff. This is our organizational chart with the public safety director on top, and of course, county manager, commission, and then the community would be above that. So our current staffing situation in operations branch where, where, where we see our issues, right now we have a total of a hundred and five personnel, and as I said, we're, we're budgeted for a hundred and twenty. Right now, each shift, each shift, and there's three shifts working a twenty-four on, forty-eight off schedule, they're at thirty point six six. So they're at, they're basically at thirty people per day. Our minimum daily staffing is thirty-four, so we're starting four in the hole every day. If we have people call out on PTO or they have scheduled PTO or sick time PTO, it goes down and we're having to call in more overtime to fill these spots. So our vacancies, which, which as of yesterday climbed by two, is a total of twenty-one now. So that's eighteen in the firefighter vacancy, two command staff, and one fire inspector. And additionally, right now, we have thirteen employees that are on payroll, but they're in the process of either becoming certified, so in that civilian to becoming firefighter EMT level, or detailed for instructing those individuals, or they're either on some sort of leave, either FMLA or some fit-for-duty status where we're trying to get them back to work. So the turnover that we saw in two thousand twenty-three and the various reasons, you know, we had, and the, I'm going to add to that number nine, they're eleven, because I had two more hand-in-resignations yesterday for other opportunities. So we are at a total of twenty-nine that we lost between two thousand twenty-three and yesterday. So the fire rescue compensation plan objectives were to become, have competitive compensation, especially here in the local area, at the firefighter, firefighter advanced EMT, and the firefighter paramedic level, addressing the compensation to where the work is being done. We also wanted to address our compression issues that we had of the pay coming on top of each other, especially where the supervisors are no longer making more than the people they're supervising. And that has happened through the, the previous pay plans that were, that were in place. And then a retention incentive, trying to motivate our personnel to stay. One, it'll happen through better compensation, and then two, through longevity incentive, which we'll talk about shortly. But one thing I need to, for, for the commissioners to understand, that the fire rescue annual, annual hours are base pay is based on two thousand nine hundred and twelve hours, whereas a forty-hour employee is based on two thousand and eighty hours. Therefore, we have a lower hourly rate, but we're working more hours for that same annual pay, okay? Right, this chart shows our area fire department pay comparison with the current Glen County Fire Rescue pay scale at the top in yellow. And the next three colored rows are Brunswick Fire, Jekyll Island, and then Camden County. I included Camden County because they are a, an organization that, that is providing the same service we are, fire-based EMS. But as you can see, comparing us with Brunswick, our, our pay has fallen behind, especially at the firefighter, advanced EMT, firefighter, and lieutenant advanced EMT level, all right? So we require our personnel to become advanced EMT to provide that higher-level medical service to the field, which, as you saw, the call volume demands. City of Brunswick is paying their personnel almost five thousand dollars more, and they're not an EMS licensed agency in the state of Georgia. They respond to the medical calls within the city of Brunswick, but they're not licensed to take care of them, the, the patients at the level we are. But our pay has fallen behind the city of Brunswick. So our proposal utilizes the tiered methodology that, that's similar to the two approved plans at PD and, and Glen County Sheriff's Office. And since this is going away from career track, how will drive professional development is ensuring that the job descriptions are updated and they address the certifications, training, and experience that we require to serve this community. So our plan has one and a half percent between the steps for the operations positions. There's a three percent increase between the top firefighter and the starting lieutenant, which is our first supervisor position. The captain promotion is equivalent to our lieutenant two rate plus one dollar an hour. There's three percent between the captain and the battalion chief, ten percent between command staff ranks, and then in the admin or forty-hour positions, there's a three percent step for each of the tiers. To help with the EMS licensure, we are going to add a dollar fifty an hour to the firefighter base pay for advanced EMT, and then three dollars an hour added to the firefighter base for the paramedics. On the officer's side, they're already required to have advanced EMT to promote, so we're just, we're going to offer a dollar fifty an hour to the officer base pay for the paramedics. And some will ask, well, why, why are officers on the fire trucks going to get paramedic pay? All right, one, they have that, that highest level licensure inside the EMS field. Two, they're still responding to those calls. Three, we're moving forward to a program of ALS licensed engine companies so we can provide a higher level of service to the community, and also perhaps another billing, billing area within our EMS side with the paramedic level fire engine responding to these calls. So this slide shows the tiers for the operations levels. As I said, firefighter tier has fifteen steps. We're resetting the advanced EMT and paramedic pay. And then over on the right-hand side are the officers, lieutenant, captain, battalion chief. These are the forty-hour position tiers. The two incentives we're requesting are the education incentive that was approved for PD and Sheriff's Office. So an associate's degree is worth a thousand dollars annually, a bachelor's two thousand, and a master's degree three thousand. These are lump sum payments, they are not added to the base salary. And the same longevity plan that was approved under PD and the Sheriff's Office with five years, ten years, and fifteen and twenty years, and then the corrected incentive amount that goes along with it. Again, it's a lump sum payment, it is not added to the base salary. So this plan that's been presented is in line with the goals and objectives within the strategic plan to cultivate a, a culture of service excellence and promote, promote and ensure a safe Glen County through community engagement, education, and preparedness. We feel that through establishing a, a, a competitive starting pay and then using the tier system up, we are taking care of recruitment, retention, and, and the compression issues that we've been facing. Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any, any questions, discussions? Would the, the new pay scale take place in this current fiscal year or would it be?
So it, it would, is being proposed to start the first pay period of April.
Okay.
I'm trying to get to a slide, yeah.
Any other questions for the chief?
Or, Chief or Tamara, what is the overall net effect for budget cash, you know, for budgeting for this change?
Yeah, yeah. So implementation for the pay was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for the, for that period of, first pay period of April to July one. And the first year was a one million forty-four thousand dollar increase over current pay.
And do we have with the vacancies in the budget, payroll budget, are we pulling from those budget like we did with the sheriff?
The sheriff doesn't really have any vacancies, but we did with the PD pull from those vacancy budgets to cover this. So the, the fire fund has a significant fund balance that has built up due to vacancies, the same situation that the PD is in. And so this plan has been reviewed and vetted, and it is sustainable at the same rate as PD, which is three to five years, just using their current fund balance without any kind of increases proposed. So the money is there due to vacancies, and we're hoping that this will solve vacancy issues and solve retention issues so that going forward, we can, you know, keep, keep people in place and not have so much turnover.
So that's three to five year, undisturbed to the budget, what we've got, basically.
Correct.
Chief, how is this going to affect overtime or is it going to eliminate overtime?
So what we hope is that we'll be able to recruit certified and licensed individuals here, cut down the time of getting them prepared to hit the field running, and that in itself will reduce the overtime. We have vacancies within our first frontline supervisors, which is that lieutenant. We have a promotion test posted for April. So that'll, when, when we fill those spots, it'll push the overtime positions lower to the firefighter position. So we're expecting to see savings on overtime as, as this plan's implemented.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And one thing that has to be understood is overtime at the fire department is never truly eliminated, and it's because of the FLS seven K rules for firefighters. So they have every year just working their regular schedule, they're going to have a hundred and fifty-nine hours of overtime, right? And so that is reflected in the cost of this.
Okay, thank you. Just needed some clarification.
Yes, sir.
And I guess, you know, we're using money and opportunity as the lure, but I think in the labor market, we all know, you know, we're basically in safety, personnel safety, we have the sheriff, the police, and your group competing for a pool of available people. Where, where, you know, I know that we're putting the money out there, but what is the strategy for your department to find the people, to get them to work? I'd just like to know what the secret is, because I sure can't find them in my business. So I mean, you know, it's good that we're doing this and that's changing, but it's got to go beyond just offering a
Yes, sir.
A dollar bill out there. How are we going to?
So the, the first thing that, that we talk about, and I guess a three-pronged attack, one, compensation if approved. Two is we're, we, we're trying to establish a culture of performance at Glen County Fire Rescue. So we become this, this destination department for those that want to do this job to come and work at. The other part of that is the call volume we have. You come here, you get to do the job. There's not a lot of places that get to say that. You know, the, you've seen the calls we go on, commissioners, chemical plants, boats turning over, you know, the structured fires, the medical calls that don't stop, okay? I ninety-five responses. So we, we have this three-pronged attack. Now what do we do with that? Well, utilizing the new Public Safety PIO and, and, and Katie also, a social media push to advertise like, okay, look at Glen County Fire Rescue. Our pay is now competitive, do you want to come be part of something special? We've been in the high schools, we go to the military bases. I think the one big push that we have to get better at though with recruiting is that social media presence. And then, you know, we, we reach down to Florida to pull people here too. There's a lot of fire academies there, we're going to start visiting, and then being up there at Forsyth a lot and talking, you know, who we are, what we do, what we get to do here.
If I could add a couple of things to, to the chief's comments as well as, as Tamara's. Just one thing to keep in mind is that the Police Department, just like, like the fire department, has used that vacancy money over the years to, to cover their shifts, cover overtime, but they have that fund balance. So as Tamara mentioned, this, this pay proposal is going to be paid for essentially for the next, because we have money in the bank essentially for the next three to five years. Same thing with the Police Department. To answer your question about recruiting. To answer your question about recruiting, Commissioner, we are working with the Police Department right now on a kind of a comprehensive recruiting and, and retention plan. It doesn't do anybody any good to keep recruiting around here, because we're all just playing a shell game with, particularly on the police side. And so the, the emphasis really is going to be on trying to bring people in from the outside, we're going to recruit from different areas around the country, different areas around the state, we're going to go to military bases, colleges, everything that we can't think of, to include potentially even putting up billboards on ninety-five if we have to. But I think that the, the, the main point that we're going to get across is that we support police like you all do, and so I think that's going to be one of the, one of the tools that we use in our recruiting plan. Once we get that laid out for the Police Department, we're going to do the same thing and lay out some type of, more of a comprehensive recruiting and, and retention plan for the Fire Department as well. And we'll, and we'll come to you, and we'll show you what that plan includes.
The, just thoughts about recruiting, the, and I don't know if it's possible or if this is the right way to go at it, but a lot of the young people, you need to do these short videos on TikTok and other places, really depicting what is the life of a firefighter and, and paramedic. And it needs to be diverse, of course.
Yes, sir.
But then we need to say we, we want you, just like the Uncle Sam.
Yeah, right, yes, sir.
We need to ask for people, and this is just my feeling. You begin to create this, I think, young people thinking about and seeing themselves doing that. And then, yes, we need to pay for this courageous service, not just based on what the market, but what is really worth, because it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to get to when people are saving folks' lives, but we can do our best effort at that.
Yes, sir.
And make sure that they have a quality of life with their families, and they can see that. So, and I think that should be a part of it, including, you know, the life of some of our firefighters, not, not when they enjoy themselves and they're tired all the time.
Yes, sir.
But, but just the family life. I mean, these are good guys, you know, regular people, but they're really heroes, just like PD, Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir.
And, and we need to depict that, but make it realistic for them. And I, I think we, and if we're intentional about this and consistent, I, I think we'll do well. Just my two cents.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree anymore with than, with what Commissioner Booker said, going where the young people are. They're not watching the evening news, they're watching TikTok, they're watching Instagram, whatever it is. And Commissioner Booker hit the nail on the head, we're doing our part by getting the funding and where you need it to bring these folks in. Now we need to sell the department and sell it better than Effingham, Camden, Jessup, all these other counties, and I believe that's the vision you got there in place and with Tamara's help, and I appreciate it, Tamara. On, as a personal aspect, you know, I was in the back of one of your ambulances a couple of years ago, and I can tell you right now, that driver that had ambulance and had a paramedic with me, they should be paid a million dollars, you know, because it depends where you, your perspective, where you're at. Are you in the ambulance or in the car behind it? But I believe this is a, a good first step. It'll, and I think like Commissioner Booker said, selling our product. We live in the Golden Isles. Mr. Fendig knows the beauty, he sees it every day. We need to sell our product, but we're, as a board, we're putting the funds there in place so we can find these people, keep them, train them, and make them the best in this state, because you made a great point from Savannah across, we're the, we're the number one. You take out the Atlanta, the Columbus, we're, we're right there, you know? So I appreciate you two's hard work in putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to add, Chief Cristofalo, the amount of professionalism that you have brought to our department. We, we have a lot of good men and women there, but the standard that you set in your leadership says an awful lot for that department, and I, I know I speak for the entire commission, we're proud to have you in that position.
Thank you, sir.
I echo the same.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the Board of Commissioners to adopt the Glen County Fire Department's Pay Plan proposal with an effective date of no later than the first pay period of April twenty twenty-four.
Second.
So have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Madam Clark, we have the one that signed up for public comment, and Mr. Turney, I think we've determined that there's nothing urgent for executive session for tonight.
That's right.
Gentlemen, all entertaining motions.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker, and amen, hallelujah, all raise your right hand. We stand adjourned. Thank you.